All right, we're good? All right. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christian Ari, please, call the rule.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Weiss. Mrs. Hedley.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mrs. Janicek.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Scialzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Not present.
Uh, when do we have an executive session? We have one tonight. Uh, announcement of executive session here for February 11th for our discussion of personnel legal matters. Um, at this time, we have a presentation from SiteLogic on our IMS renovation project. And Anthony's got that? Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, we'll go over real quick for you. We are still in Phase Three, but just to give you some information on the library and the nutrition lab. So, the library has been inspected by the code official. Everything is good. Uh, we had to send him the balancing information, which he has now, and I know that the district is in the process of putting the books and everything, re-establishing everything in there. Um, in the nutrition lab, we are waiting on some dishwashers to be put in place before the code enforcer will approve that, um, room. So, those are the two from prior. Ongoing activities, we are still in the lower level, in the locker room, health rooms, and fitness rooms. We did put in the new windows on the exterior wall. Uh, we are finishing the drywall. Painting actually has started in the classroom areas, and the ceramic tile is scheduled to start next week in the locker room area. So, we are moving along down there. And we also took, um, a little piece of the music suite upstairs because we have to get the ductwork from downstairs up to the roof for the unit to supply the fresh air down into the locker rooms for you guys to occupy. So, that is ongoing right now in the evenings, uh, as well as the day shift work. So, really, just, um, moving along down there on schedule to be completed up around the, uh, middle to end of March, and then we will go up and take over the auditorium and the music suite. And I believe she's going to drop the music kids down into what is, what will be the new health rooms, but we use temporary music rooms until we are done upstairs. So, just some pictures of the drywall finishing, uh, going on in the areas. We will work our way out of the corridor, so that is the last thing being finished at the moment. And again, just some pictures of the new windows that were put in that will service the, um, health rooms and everything. And then again, the roof will start, uh, in late March when we take over the auditorium and the music suite, so that the, uh, place will be unoccupied and under construction. We will start that roof during the school year, uh, which is the red, and then the rest of the green will be done when students, um, are out for the summer. So, that's really about it. Any questions?
This one. Go ahead, Sean. That was first, right?
Um, do you have a completion date?
Of the lower level? Or the whole project?
Right. For like, end of summer work? What is that?
Yeah, it'll be prior to school starting, so that is goal to have everything done. Um, as I told Dr. Walsh, uh, earlier today, we will still be there in September, October, doing closeout, training, punch lists in the evenings and stuff like that, but the goal is to have everything done and out of everybody's hair by the start of the next school year.
Wonderful, thank you.
Do you have more of a specific date, since we have, uh, calendar on the agenda for next year? Do you have more of a specific date that we need to stay away from?
I mean, as much as time as possible, but I think we were slating usually the 23rd, 24th seems to be an average day when they start in August. If you guys are starting differently, I just need to know that, and we can work backwards.
Okay.
I didn't know, I have not seen an updated calendar, so I wasn't sure if that's established.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
It should be third week of August.
What's that?
Third week of August.
Okay. We'll work backwards from that. It, this summer will not be anything like last summer, so, um, it'll be a, a little bit easier to get done, so shouldn't be a problem. At least might have, the roofing might have some metalwork going on after that, but again, that won't bother.
The interior spaces should be done by, and occup, you know, we should, we can occupy them by the third week of August?
Yes, yes.
So, that means the music rooms will be done before that? Or will we still have punch lists and those things to go through?
You'll also have punch lists because, you know, we'll be up to that date, so we'll have punch lists, which will be done in the evenings, but we'll try to minimize that punch list and catch things along the way so that we won't have a big punch list. Some of the punch list items from the prior phases will be done during the summer as well. So, kind of wrapping up everything, and again, we had a meeting today. We'll sit down with, um, Raquel and kind of come up with the list, so we're not missing anything, since I know we've been through three phases, um, and kind of wrap up everything this summer, so we're starting that planning now.
So, the music rooms will be used, will start in April, or will they not start until summer?
They will be taken down at the end of March, the same time as the auditorium, and those kids will move downstairs into the health rooms. So, the health rooms won't become the health rooms until you, the new schools.
So, the stairwell between the, uh, music wing and the auditorium will not be impeded for them to go down then, correct?
No, no, we'll have that open.
Okay.
Yep. We can block off the music suite, actually, with not even interfering with that stairwell.
It has its own entrance, I just didn't know what the work in the auditorium of that, because that's all connected.
No, they have a back entrance, and they have another separate entrance, so we don't need that stairwell at all. And we actually have work in the gym, so we talked about, um, I know there will be no activities this summer, and, but we said the locker rooms could be used, and we can put up another temporary wall so that they could come in from the outside, use the locker rooms for your summer activities, football and stuff like that, without impeding into the gym. Okay.
So, question I was gonna go to is the purple section is the section we already completed for the roof.
Uh-huh.
And, um, and that's, that was, that was the whole sectional roof. That wasn't tied in with the main roof.
No, that was just the cafeteria, and it was its own separate roof, yes.
And we're happy with the outcome? No leaks? Everything worked out well?
Yeah, no, the only leak we had is when we, um, went to do the roof, the unit up there must have been clogged, and so we didn't know it, um, and when we removed something, some of that water got down into the cafeteria, so we just have to replace some ceiling tiles. We have to redo some trim of the, uh, skylights inside.
Okay.
But we're gonna do that in summer as well, when we're out of everybody's way, but no, looks good. Garland has given us the warranty. Uh, we have one item to do with some conduit, a piece of conduit for the unit, but we were waiting till the snow melted, and we'll get that done, but no, everything has worked out well.
Same contractor for the rest of it, then?
No, it will be a different contractor.
Okay.
Uh, we did bid it out, and it is a different contractor, who is a Garland rep, so certified.
So, Garland was still covered for the 25?
Thirty, actually.
Thirty years.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, everything's the same. Same roof and everything, just different contractor.
Cheaper.
Cheaper.
Magic word. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, RC? Next, we have, uh, Masero, with an update from the new school project.
Uh, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
There we go. So, uh, some, a lot of those updates. We are going vertical now on, uh, the, what I call the lower portion of the building. Um, E and F wing, what you're seeing there is E and F wings, oops. This is area E. This is the F wing. This is, uh, A, C, and D. This here is the upper, in the upper portion, that's the new gymnasium. Uh, another angle here, you're looking at area E. So, this is, this is area E, the classroom wing. This is area A. This is the aux, auxiliary gym, right here. Um, the gym is obviously on the ground floor. This is the first floor slab that's poured above the gym. Again, E, E and F. Uh, E, the steel is complete in area E. Um, they have some, obviously, some decking, roof decking to go. Tomorrow, we intend to pour the first floor slab on deck in area E. E and F, again. So, section F, area D, the, it kind of spans over that, uh, retaining wall. This here, again, is the gymnasium. What you're looking at, that grid work, is the underslab drainage system. Ground floor slabs are engraved, poured in areas A and, A and C. Again, ground floor slabs, you're looking from C into, into ground floor of D. Ground floor, uh, floor decking in E, in F. First floor A, again, this was the, uh, floor slab above the auxiliary gym that we've seen in the other. Our last stair tower, which is in area C, the front portion of area C, is, uh, it's only, um, two stories, so it's, it should go up fairly quickly. It's only about 30 feet tall. Uh, steel going up in area D. Again, there's the gymnasium. Um, all the footings are, are in, and the CMU has started coming around the building. It's a bit of a challenge there, uh, the way it's built and the designated storm structure, the, um, there are special conditions that need met and above normal lap splicing or rebar, so you gotta have quite a large portion of available work to, to really proceed, and you can't really stop and start as you would on a normal wall. You gotta really plan it out and build large portions of the wall at once. Um, waterproofing is ongoing on the concrete retaining wall, and we'll be backfilling that, so we will be filled, um, up to the upper level portion. Um, our weather, oops, our temporary weather protection, so we can pour in cold, and you can see in, in various pictures, we have a tenant in, and heat is being pumped into there to keep it at the proper temperatures.
Okay.
The last little bit of, uh, deep storm work is, is complete. Um, this portion here was along, NAMs is right here, over here, so this, this portion was quite the challenge we had. It, it was about 15 feet deep through solid rock, so that last, oh, about 400 feet, took about as long as putting the rest of it in. Uh, we're, we are wrapping up, uh, major site work. Some, some do, there are some areas remaining along the retaining wall where the new road wraps around the building. Um, in the final, in that other picture, that was the deep portion of the utilities, the rest of the utilities that are above that elevation-wise remain in this area, so we, we still got some poking around to do in there, in that rock, but thankfully, we don't have to go 15 feet deep anymore. So, as we move on here for the next month, we're gonna continue with pouring, uh, slabs on deck and grade. Uh, we're gonna keep setting steel and, and installing decking as they go, and then, um, an exciting kind of milestone, we're gonna start kind of like the interior work in the ground floors, A, C, D, and that work will start with fireproofing the steel, getting interior walls laid out, and, um, hopefully, in the next month, we're starting to put exterior walls in so we can get dried in, weathered in, and then we could hopefully go to town on the inside. So, that's all I had as far as update there. Um, I do have, did you want me to go into the?
Yeah.
So, I am recommending two change orders to the board. Um, number one is for the general contractor, change order 15, associated with ASI number one, which included revision to the structural drawing, including some added steel lentils. That is an add of $7,186.
I'm emailing.
And change order number GC16 to the general contractor for the additional asphalt, um, walkways from the new parking lot up to NAMs. Do you, and that's it. Does anyone have questions? Yes. The steel lentils were in the masonry walls of the gymnasium, of the, of the storm shelter.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you just explain a little bit? I mean, it seems that whenever we talk about revisions to structural drawings, that, you know, I had a brief conversation with Mark. Seems like that's an oversight that doesn't fall on us, falls on somebody else. Can you just explain why we're paying, why we're paying for that?
Um, they, uh, for whatever reason, the lentils either changed or were not shown on the original bid documents, so through the course of preparing a construction set of documents, they were picked up by the engineer, so they were not bid before they had to be added via change order.
Okay. So, it's not the cost of steel, it's the cost of design?
No. Yes, the cost of steel and installing the lentils themselves.
Okay. Okay. It reads like it's, like it's a design change, but it's actual material.
Due to the design change, we have additional material.
Yeah.
All right. So, that's why the 7,000 for that extra steel.
Yeah, the, the 7,000 is, um, labor and material.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for that explanation.
Can we do the next one?
Oh, yeah.
Um, so I'm staring at the breakout or the cost justification that you have given to Dr. Korsinski. Um, I don't believe the school district had asked that the asphalt be done on the weekend. So, that was a charge, that we're being charged, that we didn't ask for. Um, the other thing, too, is, um, HRG labor, J&amp;M paving labor, and some Nice Wonker.
Nice Wonker's the excavator.
Construction.
Yeah.
Looks like we're paying for the same thing over and over and over again.
HRG is the, uh, surveyor that laid out the walkway. Um, Nice Wonker's the excavator who, uh, did the excavation of the walkway and the subbase, and then, uh, J&amp;M paving actually came in and paved it. So, there's three different, um, contractors associated with different activities there.
You know, sorry, just clarification. We have two walkways down there. The, the original one tied in, which I thought was on the original plans, and then we made a recommendation for that lower one. Is this for both of them, or is this just for the lower one?
It's for both.
So, the work that was done on both of them?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Um, can we get a little more of a breakout? Looking for details as to labor cost, equipment cost, those kinds of things. These are all lumped together. And this is at a large number for two walkways.
Interesting. Yeah, I could give you, what you need. So, you want additional breakout on these labor?
Like the detailed invoice cost, yeah. I mean, it was, my understanding was it was on the original drawing?
No, it was not.
Even though the top one was already, in part, was already partially there.
No, that was added, uh...
No, 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 from the old, from the old layout, we always had a walkway come down from top. All right? We just, we had to reconfigure it because we cut out the hillside to put that new lower parking lot.
No, there was never a walkway on the, on the documents.
Yeah.
There was a platform walkway that went down to the tree when we excavated, put party.
Oh, okay. Yeah. All right. There was no new shop. This ain't existed.
Yeah, there was an existing one.
So, some large concerns that this, is this expensive for two walkways? I mean, this isn't even the parking lot. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask to table this one until I get additional information. Do I need to make a motion? Tell me how you...
I'm, I'm not signing the second one till we get more information.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, see, we, and again, we know it's not you, it's just, we're, wanna be a little bit more diligent when we start studies, 'cause...
Absolutely.
Our concern is, I know things were tied in with the soil, um, but we're just afraid that, so we're gonna be asking questions.
Absolutely.
So, I appreciate you being willing to talk to us, so...
Yeah.
The 7,000, you answered it. To repeat, it wasn't for the redesign, it was for, since there was a redesign, we had to add more steel, and we can't break it still for free.
Correct.
All right? So, that, that, no problem with that one.
So, I understand we did, can I, do you want me to go back to this one, Mr. Modrak? So, he, and, we're kind of all on the same page of what I'm asking for.
Sure.
Um, so, the cost justification itemized by each item, so Ness Wonker, what, that 6,000 are all broken out. Same with J&amp;M paving, HRG surveys. I think Ricon, um, I'd just like to see markup on subcontractor's value and include bond coverage of 5%. I'd like to know exactly what that is.
That's per contractor allowed to do.
So, um, at least the top five have a more breakout. What is it, what materials were used? What was the labor cost? What items were provided? Did the earthwork have to be moved, or was it just push-off-to-the-side situation?
Okay. Yeah, I'll do, I'll give you what I got. Any other questions?
Four.
Four. Completion? I'm gonna, I ask it every time.
Yeah, no, we're still tracking behind schedule, probably, uh, two months, but we are in the process, we being, Masero and Ricon are working through the schedule to develop a, uh, recovery schedule, so sometime in March, I should have, um, recovery schedule for you.
I noticed you made up time real fast, though, from the last time you were here.
Yeah, we're making up some time in steel erection as, as was anticipated, um, a little bit, so. And we're still fighting through the weather.
I was gonna say, what are, what are the rationale for the behind schedule situation?
Behind schedule, well, a lot of, I mean, not to beat a dead horse, but a lot of the change, previous change orders that were associated with, uh, addressing all the pyrite and the, uh, unsuitable soils issues, you know, there's, there's time involved with those, as, as well as dollar amounts. So, that added to the schedule, um, didn't change, never changes our substantial completion date, right? But that's per contract, so we gotta hit that. So, we gotta dig deeper into the schedule now and see how we could make up that time. Um, we could do that by stacking crews, working a couple shifts, working in more than one place at one time. Maybe they didn't anticipate framing in E and F at the same time, but maybe we have to.
What percent of the steel is up now? You just look at all of the steel that's going up.
Um, just off the top of my head, probably 40 to 50% is up.
Okay. And a guess, where were you, how long before maybe almost 80%?
Um, probably end of March, I mean, end of April, in, mid-April.
Okay.
Another question for you. Um, if you're watching the news, you know that there was, the cost of aluminum and other, other kinds of things are going up based on, and then, in the administration and items that are being placed. Is our aluminum cost for the outside and all of that secured?
I can't accurately give you, I can neither confirm or deny. I can't accurately give, I know we, we've, we made a push when we were, um, deciding colors. Um, I'm, I wanna say it was released, and if it was released, then the, the pricing is locked in, but I'll double check for you.
Yeah, can you check, double check that our price is locked in based on the last 48 hours?
Yeah.
Don't wanna have to come to a point where you have to reevaluate what the exterior will look like, you know? Materials for the exterior. If, if the price gets to be too exer, too high...
If it's not locked in.
Yeah, if it's not locked in, thank you.
Oh, hold on, quickie.
Yeah. And thank you, RC.
Yep.
I know that we've been hearing from some of the residents, uh, in regards to some complaints they had about the worksite management. I know Mark's been, obviously, our go-to guy, and you guys have been very accommodating, trying to meet some of their wishes down there, and in fact, I believe even today, you took care of one issue before either took place.
Yeah.
So, again, not everyone's aware of that, but thank you for working through everything. I think, uh, the municipality should be happy on their end in regards to how the site is being operated, and again, thank you for your efforts in that.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. And you got to see, you have an idea what we're voting on for, uh, school calendar for next year, right?
I do not.
Third week of August. Third week of August?
Yeah, it doesn't matter to you.
Doesn't matter to you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. We're, we're gonna stay in the right... Yeah.
Um, at this time, we're gonna make a little change in, in the, um, order. Uh, Mr. Christensen, uh, may have to leave early, so I'm gonna have him take his section first with, um, facilities. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just take it for granted already. Public comments, anybody in the crowd? Um, you, you are consistent, all right, and we're doing it through call-ins, so that's it. All right, so now you just go on, yeah. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Christensen, facilities committee, please.
I wanna make sense of anything, so I see you just wanna hear these people, and spend all the effort, so these are just the two changeovers. Um, I think, at least by voice vote, the consensus around the table seems that we are, that we're ready to go.
We're gonna, the steel one, the, for the one for the steel, I think we're in agreement, all right, based on their explanation.
So, then let's modify this to pull out the second act, or we can walk through. First, the, the, or the other one, until we're fine with documentation.
Can we just move the first one to the consent agenda?
Yes.
And then leave the other one here, and hopefully, next week, we have what we need.
By next week, we have a little bit more explanation. Thank you.
Got it.
Right.
I will move GC15 to consent, and GC16 will just stay on the agenda for next week, but on a voting item.
Yep.
All right. Now, let's go back to the original, uh, correction committee, Mr. Scialzo.
Okay, we have four items. Uh, we're gonna start with a discussion of remote learning days. If anybody would like to discuss that, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, it's the board had, one of the board members actually asked for us to talk about this, because we had received a few, uh, complaints after that series of, of, um, remote days in January, that there was, particularly at the elementary level, concerns about the experience being, uh, worth, uh, the, the loss of school time, if it was, if the experience could be improved or go back to good old-fashioned snow days. Uh, it was coincidental that I had a, a great opportunity to meet with my parent advisory group, and that group, uh, further clarified the concerns, that it was primarily, uh, based on early elementary-aged students who weren't good users of, like, Google Classroom and weren't, uh, as attention-able, um, to follow along with a remote instructional class or to do work independently without a teacher in the presence to help guide or answer questions and so forth. Uh, everybody that I talked to had older kids, say, fifth grade all the way up through 12th grade, have actually good things to say about their experience with remote instruction. Uh, they were pointing to some specific examples of things like music lessons and ensemble practices happening remotely, uh, and teachers staying on, uh, while kids did work to answer questions, and so we, we went back to the, you know, the research and said, "What are we missing then?" And there were some really good findings. I printed copies of a summary sheet for the board's, um, information there, five bullets about sort of a summary of what, uh, the analysis of remote teaching has been from, from a review of the literature, from university analyses, from, uh, corporate studies of how these things have worked successfully in schools, and I highlighted some of the things that I think we need to attend to, perhaps to better improve the experience. Uh, one of which was, uh, professional development for teachers and how teaching is different, uh, when you're teaching remotely, and how to maximize that experience for kids, particularly the younger kids. We haven't done that, and that needs to be done in order for the, that experience to be successful. Uh, there's also some information about, um, allowing for two-way interaction between students and teachers, and making sure that teachers plan for that actively in their, in their design of a remote lesson, so that, uh, kids would know that there's a place for them to ask their questions and not just be, uh, listening to the head-on-the-screen talk to them. Uh, and we also need to give parents some... And we also need to give parents some support about what's, you know, how independent we can expect students to be on activities, and making sure teachers do appreciate that kids need to be able to do things independently, so that if it's grandma at home or mom who's at work in their office at home, aren't actually substituting for the teacher and doing instruction for kids because the work is not independent kinds of work. So good lessons from the literature on how to improve that experience for students. I think everybody that was in the room that night and talking to us about it agreed that the remote experience is better than a snow makeup day in mid-June. Given the choice between the two, having a snow day in January and making it up in mid-June, or having a remote day, everybody agreed that the remote experience was, would be better than a late, than a June makeup day. There's some of the information that I wanted to make sure we brought up to the conversation. So I'm of the opinion that we do a better job with professional development and routines and expectations for remote teaching for teachers, and keep the remote option available to us as a district.
We need to look at investing in to make this experience better, either on the teaching side or on the student side?
I don't, I'm not aware of any complaints or concerns about the software or the tools. In fact, we did hear some positive comments about some of the tools that kids had access to remotely as an alternative to live instruction, doing things, not as an alternative to, but in addition to live instruction, some activities they would do online, things like Study Island and so forth. All of that got good, got good feedback on, and no complaints as far as I'm aware of, of the Google Classroom remote experience. That software tool hasn't been identified, to me at least, of being a problem. So to answer your questions more simply, no, I'm not aware of any concerns or any software that we would need.
So I appreciate the research and the takeaways. I think, you know, it's worth giving it a shot to see, to see if we can improve the experience. The emails that we got sounded, you know, frustrated, you know, because parents want their kids to learn. It's not that they're not trying, but it, it was many days that they were not prepared for. I don't think anybody was really prepared for that many days in a row. So again, I appreciate the legwork and the parent feedback. I really appreciate the emails and, and also the, you know, informal surveys and just the, the communication I appreciate. So keep, keep that going. It's great.
Yeah, thank you. And we, I should have mentioned also that we did bring this up with our Federation leadership about these concerns and, and what recommendations they could make to help us improve that experience so that the remote day was as maximized as possible. So we're, I think, I feel pretty good that we're gonna have a better experience as we move forward.
I had two thoughts on that. One, and maybe this happens because I have older children, so I know they know how to get on, so I don't even look, but I, I don't, I'm not sure if all of the parents of the younger kids are getting at some point in the year if we have a remote day. Here's the list of the websites. Here's the usernames and passcodes. This is the general expectation. Like, this is what we want you to do, like, in a little more detail than I think just the overall, like, hey, everybody do your best. So I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And the other thing was just as a reminder, because I, I did hear for some family members who have a student with an IEP, and I've been telling them, like, when you have your IEP meeting, make sure you're addressing in your IEP meeting what would make sense for an accommodation or a modification or something for your student during a remote day. Because not all students are going to need that, but some might, but that should be something in the IEP meetings. And families, sometimes it doesn't occur to them to ask about that until they have a remote day. So families ask.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback. I see Mrs. Viglioli taking notes, which tells me we're gonna, we're already on it.
Yeah, I, I, I think that is a great idea to even come up, like, when you get on an airplane, sometimes they have videos, you know, you watch the safety instructions, you know, having that on a website somewhere in two minutes, very concise, here's what to do if you have an elementary student, here's what you do if you have a middle school student, as a parent, here's what you do if you're a high school student. I think that'd be helpful, easy, probably better than a letter or something like that, just make it simple. Okay.
Our students have experience with remote instruction. The younger kids, you know, they do not.
Right.
But yes, we're, we were just all three talking about ways we could do, do a better job of making sure parents are ready and that everyone was clear on expectations.
And even the couple of the comments from some of the parents or grandparents, because again, some of the parents are still working during the day, from my experience and not having knowledge to all of them, it's just, you know, some of the, it relieves some of the frustration they're having. But even then, as our staff can work through, and I know you did this last time, this Viglioli, you know, taking your notes, making our adaptations and identifying those specific families, and then our staff, principals, teachers can then get out there and do one-on-one, and even possibly adjust whatever learning mechanism is for that particular student if there is inability for that family to, because you're right, a lot of them we're not involved with five years ago, and this is all new to them. And that's something, again, I think with the tutorial coming through, onsite, going through, and the repetition of it. One thing, too, we still have this, the calling it remote, calling it FIDS, and I feel bad because the news always puts out delays or FIDS days, and they're not. We, we discussed this before, where we have not used any FID days yet. We're all remote days, and as you said publicly here and also on our website, depending on the weather, we could use as many as we want, based on the weather. This was an anniversary from a storm from ten years ago, and we were shut down for two weeks, and we didn't have those luxuries back then. So we're always facing that risk here in Western PA of having a storm come in there and we lose the ability to get on the roads for two weeks, and that's what it was ten years ago. So just everyone understand, remote days are different. These are not, we're using remote, not FIDS. Because some of our staff members still don't, maybe they just are not understanding.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, next item, we're gonna be looking at the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar options. So you have option one A, option one and two. So I, I guess if I can give my own opinion.
Sure.
I would probably just ask Dr. Walsh and his team, what you think would be best for our students and staff for operating the school year, including, I guess, thinking about construction as well with IMS. I guess it's really, really up to you and your team, which would be the best one, whatever you would recommend.
Thank you. So there, there aren't a big difference between the three options that you have in front of you, option one, one A, and two. They both start with teachers in the third week and then go to the first day of school, and that's the distinct difference between the two options is whether it's a Wednesday or a Thursday, and it's, but it's not weeks difference. We really had a unique year this year because of that IMS construction. We didn't start until the last week of August, which is the, really a late for, for our history, for our experiences. It was a nice long summer, but it also pushed everything back a week into this year. We're graduating a week later than we did previous years, all because of that calendar shift. That is not an issue for us this coming summer. They're not doing major ramp renovations and, and kitchen installs this summer at IMS, so there is no need to build the calendar around their construction schedule, which we just went back to what we did prior years, is start the third week and finish the last first week of June. They, one, this subtle difference between one and, one and one A is the Monday after Thanksgiving versus the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We finally got a green light from our transportation department to perhaps recommend that we pilot a, an early dismissal or a half-day on the Wednesday before and keep the Monday after as a vacation day. So that's not, doesn't reflect on here because I'm not sure how we would show that on the calendar. We haven't really done that before, but that would be, our recommendation would be to, to go with option two with November twenty-sixth being a half-day.
Dr. Walsh, years ago, like, when I went to school here, they used to just throw a half a line through the day.
Yeah, okay.
And put it on the thing and say, you know, early release, early dismissal day.
Yeah.
Like, you call them act eighty days, but we didn't always have those at that point in time, so they would just draw a half-line, so just adding another symbol to this for parents. I also want to point out that if parents aren't looking and watch this later, no matter what option, there are two full weeks of winter break. So winter break would start after classes complete on December nineteenth, and students won't return to the classroom until January fifth, which is a change from prior years.
Yeah, the holidays fall at the.
The holidays fall on, yeah, middle of the week, so it is, it is a challenge. But just for parents, you know, we've seen a lot of email, or a lot of social media comments about planning for vacations and those kinds of things. And option two, which you just recommended, also gives them the Wednesday before the Easter break or spring break as an off day, also because it is Teachers' Records Day. So as parents plan, that is an additional day that is not nor, not normally in the schedule. So this, this seems to be some things that parents have been asking for, and the schedule has just fallen in that direction this coming year.
Yeah. Mr. Valani, there isn't a little graduation cap on the days there, but I'm assuming we're talking about June fourth on option two would be the graduation day.
Thursday.
That's the Thursday.
Correct, yeah. We've kind of set a tradition every year with seniors' last days Thursday. Whether the last day of school ends on that day or the next day, irregardless, we're able to run that graduation, like many other area schools, on that Thursday, Friday, Saturday morning, last backup.
Okay. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't appear on this version of the calendar, but should be a little graduation cap.
For option two? Because it has, option two shows graduation Friday, June fifth at the bottom.
Right, and that's why I just asked him to confirm.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that the written part, we fixed that, too. Okay, so you were saying for the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, make it a half-day?
Yes.
And keep the Monday off?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm fine with option two, but when SiteLogic was here, that, you know, we were kicking around third week of August, so she may be interpreting that as the end of the third week, when we meant the first, so if you could just check with SiteLogic and make sure we can have access to the building on the fourteenth, because that looks like room prep day.
Yeah, fifteenth, yeah. The good news is, is that they're not in any areas that would necessarily matter at that point.
For academic rooms.
Right, because they're gonna be moving into the music rooms in April, they'll be done before that point, so they can get into the music rooms. The auditorium, first day, second day of school, it doesn't matter whether we actually can get in or not.
Sure, okay, yeah, as long as, yeah, we're not in the academic wings, or they're not in academic.
Yeah, there's, right. And any work that would be left over is all, you heard her say tonight, she said, is all second shift of work, touching up paint or fixing dings in the drywall, anything on the punch list is all second shift from the start of school all the way through the completion of the project.
I also just wanted to clarify, because we got some questions when we were meeting with the Federation, of why a change in the beginning of our usual sequence. We often get requests from teachers at the beginning of the year when we're doing convocation or beginning in-service that they'd like to have their room prep day first. It's what's first and foremost on their mind. They want to make sure their classroom is ready, so that was taken into consideration in moving the records day first. We've also added an additional in-service day. We will be moving to a new student information system, which will require all the staff to be trained. Also knowing that those transitions are coming in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we would likely like to continue front-loading some extra in-service time at the beginning. Just wanted to clarify, that's a little bit different than usual.
And then currently, and this may need to change, but just putting it out there, we have Election Day as May nineteenth, but that may or may not be the day, so just, that could be a moving target with parents.
Okay.
Because I know that hasn't been set yet.
Yeah, well, we can, that's an in-service day, so it could move.
Right, it could move, but it, again, it's a day that parent, children are not in classrooms, so for parents to be aware that that day could, that is, that could move depending on what the state decides, and that schedule is not out yet.
All right, so the only, from option two, the change would be is that half-day on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
And then the physical change of the graduation at the bottom going to Thursday?
June fourth.
June fourth, rain day, Friday, rain day, Saturday.
Right.
Okay. So that's, that'll be on the consent for next week, then? Vince, sound good?
Sounds good. All right, we, any more questions on the calendar? Okay. Number three, school, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to sign a five-year affiliation agreement with Slippery Rock University School of Nursing for nursing practicum commencing on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five through January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-nine, and for professional development, administration is recommending PASBO, professional development, School Safety Summit in Mechanicsburg, PA, and we are looking at healthy governance and sustainable funding at Grove City. Are there any questions on three and four? I recommend placing three and four on the consent agenda.
Is there anybody else going to let her see the ACSI flourish deeper?
That is actually our non-public institution, so we have to have an equitable share with non-public schools, and that money is managed by us. So those are teachers from Hillcrest using a portion of their equitable share to go. None of our staff, those are their teachers.
I was more, I guess my next question was, there was no other non-schools that would want to go? I mean, there's several other.
Yeah, we have one other, Hillcrest, and.
Should be Ave Maria Academy.
Yes, but that, that was the only one that was interested in going to this one. Ms. Walsh, debrief me before the meeting. Thanks.
And then, Bacher, okay, the B one, that's when you and SRO Radnick?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, all good?
All done.
All right, Finance Committee, Kim, Turner, Walsh Turner, Personnel.
Personnel.
Oh, I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself. Sorry, Darren.
Oh, that's okay.
Personnel, thank you.
Under Personnel, which proceeds Finance. We have four items, acceptance of resignations, appointment of personnel, change of assignment, and approval of unpaid leave of absence. Any discussion? I'd like to move those four to the consent agenda.
So move. Discussions, okay, now we get to Finance.
Right, I have February twenty-twenty-five salary and bills, January twenty-twenty-five financial report, budgetary transfers, the payment for the new elementary school, there are five invoices, invoice to Nacero CSM Services LLC for fifty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and seventy-two cents, invoice to Ender's Plumbing and Heating Company in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. Is that Harnet, Hor, Harnet-Horanic Construction in the amount of thirty thousand, fifteen dollars, Ricon Construction in the amount of two million, one-hundred-and-sixty-one-dollar, one-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-three dollars and forty-one cents, and Merritt Electrical Group for three-hundred-and-thirty thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. We have Phase Three invoice to Hayes Design Group in the amount of fourteen thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. We have Phase Two, Giza's invoice to SiteLogic in the amount of three-hundred-and-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. We have the acceptance. We have the acceptance of a grant, discussion of a motion to accept the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Safety Schools grant for the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school year in the amount of $171,585. The approval of wide-area network renewal beginning July 1, 2025. The approval of a student services contract. And your financial reports at your desk for 31, 32, and 39. Without any concerns, I move 1 to 9.
I just wanted to ask a question before we did that. For 9, is that for the alternative program, just through the end of this school year, right?
Correct, that's an agreement in place for AEDY if we had a student that qualified under those reasons and necessitated the need to go to an alternative placement.
Okay, I saw it and I was like, shouldn't it be next school year? Then I thought, like, did we have one that's been in the school year?
In place, we need it, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Can I move 1 through 9 to the consent agenda? As long as numbers go into 1, 2, and 3.
I just had a question on number 4, on a lot of these invoices. Maybe RC here, or Mark, you can answer this. Are those progress payments, they were completed payments, or are they draws for future work to be completed? We pay after it's completed, yeah, okay. And you're signing off on that, or between you and RC? Okay, okay.
Nothing else? Okay, move on to Policy, Mrs. Hoppe.
Okay, in Policy, number 1, we have revision to Policies 707 and 805.2. Policy 707 is use of facilities, and 805.2 is school security personnel. Mr. Modrak, I think you had a question on the facilities use.
Yeah, yes. Going over the facilities use, the AR that comes underneath, it makes reference to the district mayor will dictate what the security would be and what the cost would be. And unfortunately, we had a conversation, Dr. K and I, about an event that took place that he attended, and there was a lack of security or their actions. But still, it's, so should the AR covers the security, shouldn't that also be in the policy regards to? Because it says, like, for the poll, we, you know, we hire lifeguard, we determine that, you know, cafeteria, staff custodian, just to take that line out of the AR and put it into the policy. So when someone is, pulls it up on the website, they can see that, I mean, instead of taking things for granted, they should, but that the security is mentioned, and we determine what the security is, not the person running the facility.
So, Mr. Modrak, the AR provides us flexibility, because when applicants apply, they don't always represent how many individuals are going to be at the activity.
Correct.
And so we internally will review that and determine whether or not we need more or few. So if you put that in a policy, it might limit us to be a little bit flexible.
Well, again, it just, it could be vague, just saying that security is our determination and the cost, so forth.
It's, I think it's already in there because of our process.
It's the...
I think it says something to the degree, like, the administration has a discretion to...
Right, yeah.
If it's there, I apologize.
Groups may be required to show proof of adequate adult supervision, and the district reserves the right to require security and/or police supervision at the district's discretion and at the expense.
Thank you, I apologize, and I did miss that.
I'm glad you pointed that all out. Yes, yes, yes. Security is important. Item 2 is Policy 702.3 concerning memorials. Items 1 and 2 are third readings, they're the final readings, so we will be voting on those next week. Item number 3 is revision to 2 Policies, Tuition Income and Opening Exercises, Opening Exercises and Moment of Silence and Flag Displays. So I believe 1 and 2 are moved to the consent agenda.
I would like to have a discussion about 807.
Sure.
We added, excuse me, we added the optional language that isn't required. And I would prefer that we do not add the optional language. And that is the second to last paragraph. "The Board shall direct professional employees to conduct a brief period of silent prayer or meditation as part of daily opening exercises. Silent prayer or meditation shall not be conducted as a religious service or exercise." And the citation to that, it cites to, let me pull it up here, Title 23. Oh, wait, went to the wrong one, hold on. That citation already allows an individual professional employee to do that if they choose in their classroom, but adding the optional language is us requiring professional employees to do that? And I feel that if we're going to use instructional time, a minute a day is three hours a year, two minutes a day is six hours a year. I would prefer that we use that for teaching executive functioning skills or self-regulation skills or building classroom community, so that students appreciate each other in their classroom together and work together with their teachers and school staff.
So are you suggesting that instead of the word "shall," we replace it with "may," or getting rid of that language altogether at the beginning of the policy?
Getting rid of it, because it is not, let me pull up the, that whole section is optional under the PSBA. Let me find it here. Oh, wait a minute, I have to look in drafts. I was like, it was just there.
Yeah, Mrs., Janice, like, Mrs. Hoppe, I'm not sure, because when I submitted this to Mrs. Gregg, I had checked "no" on to not include that language, because our current policy did not include that language.
Okay.
But she still included it in the red line version, so I'm not sure what happened in her, between me and what ended up here. So it's not in current policy, we didn't, the administration didn't recommend it to be added.
Okay, so nobody intended it to be there? Okay, good.
So we can go back to any other policy?
So then we can take that right out and go, okay. Yes, it's that whole, those two sentences right there.
Yes.
No, just the...
"The Board shall direct professional employees to conduct a brief..."
Yes.
"...period of silent prayer meditation, etc."
Right, the last one, and that last paragraph is what's changed in PA code, which necessitated the policy revision.
Yes.
And that one has to stay.
That one stays.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we're coming to the end of the meeting. Any public, I guess, I wish you guys are public. They left. Any board comments?
One, just one.
We have a board comment, yes, Mrs. Hoppe.
February is National Career and Technical Education Month, so all of the trades and the culinary arts and the baking and pastry arts and our Steel Center programs and kids are to be celebrated in the month of February. I'm very proud to be the Buffalo Park representative at Steel Center. We had our board meeting last Tuesday, and the kids are doing wonderful things. There are renovations happening there, and the kids are actually a part of the renovations. They are working on the HVAC, they are working on the carpentry, they're working, they're actually putting their skills to work within their school, and it's very, very cool. And we had a phenomenal dinner last week, prepared by the students, dinner and dessert. And I ate the dessert, and it was wonderful.
Thank you.
Jealous.
Anybody else, please? No? Yes?
I just want to say congratulations to the high school team for such a wonderful polar plunge for Special Olympics. That was very cool and exciting, it was very, very cold, although I didn't, was not able to do the plunge, but it was still cold. And several board members did, Mr. Modrak did, and Mrs. Hundley did, and Mrs. Walsh Turner did.
That's the proof.
There you go, they got pictures. And I saw all the photos, and you really just, amazing amount of fundraising and really just knocked that out of the park. And it was a wonderful day over there. And thank you for putting it together and supporting the program.
Did see Mr. Pisonari's costume, right?
Oh, how could we forget that? That was the best picture, I think, ever. I'm not sure that can be topped.
I didn't know the bar was that high on costumes, I felt like...
We have to show it next week, yes, indeed.
Not, 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 yeah.
That's a good idea, Mr. Kermey, I think it's one of the five big things next week.
And Groot, you have to include Groot, you should do like the whole thing, yes.
Repeat date, Mr. Valoni, 14, my total raise?
Yeah, we were about 14, 450, so almost $14,500.
That was just from the board, 14 from the board, right?
Signed cashed, the Special Olympics.
So it was very good, Mr. Hernandez, you guys did a fabulous job.
She gave a nice thank you card. It was a tremendous effort, Mrs. Hernandez, our best buddies club, our exceptional students and staff, Dr. Korsinski, the custodial maintenance staff, I mean, it was all hands on deck and a lot of people to make that such a special day for a great cause. So thank you, everyone, and everyone who participated and came.
Who was his costume?
It's up for debate whether that was regular attire or part of an outfit, but he was there, he showed up for us, he was there.
He was, but he contributed, right? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, you there, Jordan?